We welcome everybody tonight to the Planning Commission meeting. To start with, Deion Turley is going to offer a prayer. And then Edward is going, or sorry, Andrew. Sorry about that, Andrew. Andrew will follow with the pledge of allegiance and we'll dive in.
Father in heaven, we're grateful to thee for this day and for the beauty of the surrounding community in which we live. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve the city and the citizens here. We ask thy blessings and thy inspiration to be with us as we go about our duties. And ask of us and all the people whose lives are blessed by this city. And again, we're, yes, I ask thy spirit to be with us in all things that we do. In these things we pray for, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll take a quick roll. Andrew, we'll start with you. Please state your name and declare if you have any conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Jamin Rowan, no conflicts.
Deion Turley, no conflicts.
Brian Smith, no conflicts.
Great. Next, we'll turn things over to the Community Development Department to dive into item number one.
So, item number one is a proposed amendment, ordinance amendment to sections 15.03-300, 15.03-310, and 15.04-130, all found in our Provo City Code. The amendments that are being requested are, come from the Development Approval Process Review Committee, which was established by the council. They are looking at ways to improve the process to be more efficient, more timely, more responsive. As one of the items that they've been looking at, they have reviewed the, these ordinance sections that are being proposed for amendment. The slide that you have in front of you is really just the summary. Your staff report has the full text change, but in essence, the key change that's being made is the one that you see there on the screen. So, under all sections, which would be concept plan, final project plan, and preliminary subdivision, they have two separate paragraphs. When an applicant comes in to make a proposal, paragraph number two is a list of items that are absolutely 100% all the time required for them to submit. And their application is not vested until all those items are received by the city along with the application and the fee. Paragraph number three, which you can see here, previously stated, based on size and scope, staff could require some additional things. And then, as you can see in the staff report, there's fairly lengthy lists that apply to all of those different plans. And then the last item of all those lists is, and anything else that the staff thinks is necessary. To eliminate confusion, part of what we get a lot of times is, you'll get applicants that see both of those lists. So, before they even make application, they're preparing all of that documentation. And sometimes for the decision, especially in the case of concept plans and preliminary subdivisions, those are generally required with rezone requests. So, they're providing some pretty detailed engineering that, in order to ask for the zone change request. So, the DAPR committee felt like, in order to eliminate some of that confusion, the lengthy list that wasn't necessarily binding, and it was, it was just a heads up of, hey, here's some things that might occur, they felt like this language that you see before you was more appropriate, which basically does, it still allows all the same things to be required, but it doesn't provide a list that suggests that an applicant should submit those right up front. So, the initial development costs involved with their engineering fees and whatnot, unless the project was deemed of some sort of complexity to where that was necessary, but that would become a discussion for the staff and the applicant to have after their application was vested. So, hopefully that helps clarify the intent and the meaning behind the amendment that's in front of you. The only other things that change is, in 1503-300, there is the addition of a conceptual integrated development plan. Those are required in preliminary subdivisions. There are instances where concept plans come in where a subdivision is not part of that. That committee felt like it was appropriate to ask for that plan, which basically just shows that they're considering how adjacent properties interact with what they're proposing to do. So, they wanted that added in as part of the listed requirements. Under final plan, a utility plan was actually in that long list of paragraph three, we might require it, but we always require it. So, we moved that up into the final, or into the paragraph two, which is the absolute, you have to provide it every time. And then in preliminary subdivision, just a re-titling, and you can see that in your, in the staff report and with the language that's there proposed for you, is, it states an infrastructure plan is necessary. We just put the word preliminary in front of it so that it's clear it's not a full engineered drawing. That's the essence of the amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
It sounds like it's going to be a friendlier, more efficient process for both the city and for the applicant. Is that your assessment?
Yeah, we believe so, and that's why we're recommending approval.
That's the objective, anyway.
I have a question that's, from my information, maybe others, is who's on the DAPR, the Development Approval Process Review Committee? Is that a citizen committee combined with staff, or is that all?
There are, there are three council members and primarily city staff. I don't know if there's any.
That committee has taken input from a lot of different developers through a long process of input, but the committee itself, three council members and professional staff.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was getting to, is, is there input from developers and that kind of thing? Perfect. Thanks.
Any other questions to staff? Do we do the motion to go into public hearing, or do we just, straight? Okay. Appreciate staff's explanation and the discussion we've had so far. If anybody has any comments they'd like to offer on this, we'll go ahead and take comments from the public now. Nothing at all? Great. Okay. We'll close the public hearing then on that item. Any other additional discussion on our part in staff? Sounds like we might be ready for a motion then. Please.
I'd like to recommend approval of Provo City Community Development's request for an amendment to sections 15.03.300, 15.03-310, and 15.04-130 of the Provo City Land Use and Development ordinances to clarify minimum required submittals for project plan reviews.
I think we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second the motion.
We go, a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think, I believe that was unanimous. Moving on to item two, items two, three, and four are all connected pretty closely. I guess I'll kind of maybe defer to staff's lead in terms of how you want to present, if you want to consolidate all.
If you'd like to read them all in, then we'll kind of present them in a bundle, if that would work.
Okay. Great. So, the first proposal is a proposed general plan text amendment. The next proposal related to the same prospective development is a proposed zone change with item number four then being a proposed project plan approval. All four are property that's in the vicinity of 120 and 400 North on Lake Shore Drive in the Fort Utah neighborhood.
Okay, what I'd like to do is give you background, again bundled, but individual too. We'll see how it plays out. What we want to tell you up in front, the developer will be proposing to continue this item tonight. He will seek some input and some feedback that way, but we feel it's important to at least give you some background to start with. First of all, this map represents, or these three maps represent the general plan amendment. And the area where that generally occurs is off Center Street and 3110 West or Lakeview Drive, Lake Shore Drive, I'm sorry. I think it worked that day to day, I should get it right by now. And then here's the outline of the area involved with Century Homes. And you can see, again, it straddles the east and west side of Lake Shore Drive. The general plan includes an appendix, C3, that developed a plan for this area. And the map on the right shows the general layout that was given as a concept plan with that proposal. The lot sizes, you can see through there, go from half acre to acre and a half, and I think there's even maybe a two, two and a half in there somewhere. Basically, this one again shows the general area. This one with the current zoning map shows the bottom portion of that plan, that Pelican Creek Plan, which was actually developed and rezoned to the SDP3. That was the only area that was rezoned to that project. And so, the rest of it was never developed. The owners basically wanted to withdraw from that agreement, and, which, the argument would be then it would resort, if that appendix were done away with, it'd go back to the other policies and goals of the general plan that states for the Fort Union and the southwest portion of the city. This is the proposed layout that we have at this time, showing the various street layouts. And, you know, as given the staff report, we talked about some of the issues and some of the proposal, how it lays out in terms of a performance development zone. Performance development zones basically take the base density of an underlying zone and then allow enhancements, or density bonuses for enhancements to the development. The developers propose certain enhancements that create bonus densities, and I think there's just a lot of discussion. We have not used really a zone like this for quite some time with staff that's on board now, and so there are sometimes issues as to how things are interpreted. But I think, you know, we looked at the intent and purpose of the zone and tried to see if this subdivision proposal matched that. We haven't, I think we, you know, mentioned some of the issues that we had with the development. If it's okay now, though, however you want to go, but turn over to the developer and let him present what he's proposing, or at least looking for. And we have cameras with, from Century Homes tonight.
Okay, great. Would the applicant like to come forward and just kind of further describe the proposals we're talking about?
So, my name is Cameron Spencer. From, Cameron Spencer from Century Communities. And we've been working on planning and entitling this piece for a while now. We've been working with staff, and also, we've met twice now with the Fort Utah neighborhood. And we've met with them a couple times now with previous concepts, and now with this current concept, and gotten their feedback. It's pretty obvious that we have some work to do, and, both from the staff level and from a neighborhood feedback level. And we want to request that we continue this item and not request for approval tonight, because we think that we do have a lot of work to do, and we'd like to allow some time to go back to the Neighborhood Council and the Fort Utah neighborhood folks, and work with them, and also with staff to revise our layout and see if we can get a little bit more cohesive plan for the area. So, with that said, I want to take you through some of the points that we have, and go through these. The plan that we put in front of staff is, the, the plan we put in front of staff is 101 lots. And with, the way that we propose to achieve the 101 lots is with an R110 zone with the PD overlay that would allow us to get up to the 101 lots. The base density at four units to the acre is only 95 units. With the PD overlay, the total possible units you could apply for would be 108. This plan involved 101 lots. It wasn't well received in the Neighborhood Council meeting, and we got some really good feedback from the neighbors, and we want to take those concerns and address them and work towards a different plan. So, with that, some of the things that we were working on when we went to entitle this subdivision is, we wanted to comply with the density outline in the West Side general plan. Originally, we thought that the West Side general plan was going to get revised to include a six-unit-to-the-acre density along this side. Turns out, we were wrong, and it doesn't look like that's going to happen. So, we want to go back and look at it as a four-unit-to-the-acre plan. We also wanted to try and utilize some of the natural and existing features, such as the Provo River and Lake Shore Drive. Lake Shore Drive causes some concerns for the subdivision, because we don't want to front cars and driveways onto Lake Shore Drive and create some issues there. So, we wanted to work with those natural and existing features. We had some different ideas than staff about how to approach the integration of the Provo River into our plan. Generally, from a, from a lot sales standpoint, we wanted to back those lots up to the river and put some trails back there with some open space. And, you know, there's, there's some merit to that discussion, but the staff has pointed out to us that they would like to see it kind of integrated more into the road and street design, so that it's a more integral part of the community as you drive through it, and it opens up the neighborhood and allows the river to be more visible instead of tucked behind people's homes. So, that's one of the concerns that we have, is, we want to address that concern. We also want to construct a subdivision that has some broad market appeal. We want to be able to get in and be successful building homes and moving people into the area. We want to provide a sense of community by integrating open space and connecting some of those open spaces together with some trail connections, and providing some play areas and entry monumentation to provide a sense of arrival and something that neighbors can feel good about living there. And we also wanted to buffer around the edges with some bigger, larger lots, because we are sensitive to the fact that the neighbors to the south and east have, you know, pretty big lots, 30-acre lots or bigger. And so, we want to put some larger lots around those edges to make sure that we're trying to give them some large lots that are like the ones that they currently live in. So, our plan now is to currently, we want to go back and revise our plan to keep the unit count at or below, count at or below four units to the acre. We'll probably still utilize the PD overlay, because that helps us with our open space and providing trails and things like that, and still getting the street circulation that we want. But we won't try to get a concept that exceeds at all four units to the acre. We're also looking at ways to integrate the river and associated open space. One of the things that we want to do after working with staff is, basically, put the streets out towards the river, so that you're driving along the river and it's open and apparent to everybody that drives through the neighborhood that the river is a central feature on the community. One of the, one of the subdivisions that we looked at when we look for similar densities and designs is the Broadview Shores community that's already approved in West Provo. When you break down that subdivision, currently, it's 86 lots. The lot sizes range from 6,000 to 20,000 square feet, and it's approximately 23 acres. Their overall density works out to be about 3.7 units to the acre. And so, we want to, this is, I apologize for the crudity of this sketch, but it's me, this is my artwork here, so my mom will probably frame this and put it on their wall one day, but it's the best I could do. So, this plan is one of the possible revised concepts that we want to explore. It would put 88 lots in the area. The lots would range from 6,000 to 18,000 square feet on approximately 23.8 acres. The river would be central to the design with the street layouts and trail connections, and we would get a 3.7 unit-to-the-acre density overall on the site. That's just a concept at this point. We don't know if that is really where it will go, but, or if it's feasible for lot sizes and circulation, but just on a sketch, that's what we'd like to try and pursue. One of the things that we talked about with the neighbors was that, and it came up over and over in the neighborhood meeting, they, we had, in our current concept that's included in the staff report, it includes lot sizes that are 4,000 to 6,000 square feet, and there was strong objection to lots that small. We designed those lots, even though they were small, to still accommodate a normal home with a front and rear yard setback that would comply with the city ordinances, and also side yard setbacks, but it does make a small product that would fit on that. So, one of the things that we want to try and do is move away from those under 6,000 square foot lots and eliminate those altogether. These are just some examples of some of the, we want to put a play structure in the community. We want to put an entry monument and have some trail connectivity and landscaping throughout the subdivision. When we talk about what we want to build, we want to make sure that we're meeting what the market is, is supporting right now. And so, we take a look at the market demographics, and a majority of the home buyers nowadays are millennials and baby boomers. That accounts for almost 50% of the market when you look at it by age. And, so basically, our buyers are, are younger, starting out kind of buyers, or they're baby boomers that, maybe they're wanting to downsize, they don't have kids at home anymore, they don't want to take care of a big yard or something like that. But that's kind of what we're seeing in the market. There's been a big shift in, in the actual buyer demographic. We'd like to build homes that appeal to that broad market base. And we've got 58%, or almost 50% of the market that fits those two categories, and to be quite candid with you, that's the majority of our home buyers that we see under contract throughout the Wasatch Front right now. We also want to provide a home that fits in with what's currently available in Provo. The median income in Provo is $68,000 per year. The average new home price is right around $320,000, and the average existing home price is $246. And so, we want to keep, be conscientious of what the market is doing right now. The neighborhood concerns were well articulated by Jonathan Hill, and so I just want to review those again, his main points. And our plan for addressing them are shown here on this slide. The current concept is over four units per acre, and we want to revise our site plan to address the overall density and get that down. The development doesn't enhance surrounding areas. We recognize that our plan took a different approach to that, and we're open to revising that site plan to integrate some of those overall features into the site. And there's also concern that the development will strain available infrastructure, both from the two main points that Jonathan brought up in his report, were that the sewer capacity is a question, and the traffic on Center Street is a question. And so, we want to work closely with engineering and planning to make sure that those concerns are addressed before we ask the Planning Commission to, to vote on our project. The sewer capacity, we're working with engineering right now to, to figure out what that is. We'll probably likely just get in the queue and wait for them to resolve that. So, we, I think there's a lot of work to do there. The traffic concerns, some of the issues brought up in the neighborhood meeting were loading all that traffic onto Center Street. Our hope as a developer is that some of the city's plans for improving traffic flow and roads in that area will alleviate some of those problems along Center Street. And we also want to point out that our homes won't, it won't be 90 lots all at once that we're moving people in. It'll be structured. We think this is probably a four to five-year build-out for this project, and during that time, we're hopeful that some of the city infrastructure can catch up, and so that we don't overstrain Center Street. But we do recognize that that's a, that's a major concern for the area, so we want to take a more in-depth look at that with engineering and planning to make sure that we're addressing that. These are some examples of some of the homes that we would propose to build in that area. They're a mixture of single and two-story homes. All of them are minimum three-bedroom, two-bath, and vary in square footage from 1,400 square foot finished up to 2320 square foot finished on the two stories. These are just some examples of some of the interior pictures on some of our existing model homes that are those products. And that's all for now. So, I appreciate the Planning Commission giving us an audience, and the reason I still wanted to come in front of Planning Commission tonight is to solicit feedback and make sure that we took a collaborative approach on how to plan this subdivision in this area. And so, we look forward to working on that further with you. Thanks.
Mr. Spencer, thank you. We might have a couple of questions for you, and just, I want to be as clear as we can. You are requesting that the three items on the agenda tonight all be continued.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
This will come up again when you come back, but I'm just curious if you have specifics on what you think the PD overlay will provide you, if you want to, adding that into the zone change.
Specifics on what it will provide us, specifically, it'll allow us to go to a smaller lot. So, some of our lots would still comply with the ordinance via the PD overlay. The R110 zone wouldn't support a lot that's 6,000 square feet, but we would. But we would still want the ability to put those in, both from a standpoint of we want to create a subdivision that has some lot diversity with small lots and big lots mixed in.
With a road division?
With a road division and things. And so the PD overlay allows us to do that. It also gives us the flexibility to incorporate some of our open space and not feel like we're not getting anything in return for the open space that's given.
Thanks.
I just want to say thanks for listening to the neighbors and to staff and for realigning that street near the river. I think that's an important feature. I think if you were to reduce the number of lots that you have, that will certainly affect the cost of your product. Does that also affect the affordability of your product?
It might, we might have to make some adjustments on product to address some of those affordability issues. You know, as costs go up and we'd spread the cost of the land over fewer lots, the price of the home would obviously have to compensate for that. Some of the, some of the way that we have to integrate the river into the design might cost a little bit more too. So we're currently analyzing, and that's one of the reasons we need more time is we want to make sure we work through all those scenarios on the concept. Because we do want to keep the homes hitting that affordability scale. I mean, home affordability is a big issue right now. It's actually, homes aren't very affordable. And that's a big problem that we face every day. But we do want to make sure that we're building a home that somebody can live in for a good number of years and be happy with. And so we want to make some value decisions there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have several things that I'm thinking about and I don't know how many are appropriate to ask all at once. So maybe just take one at a time. We just came from a, what I thought was a pretty sobering meeting in our pre-meeting with city staff, engineers who are responsible for the sewage drainage and the treatment facilities and all that kind of stuff. And I mean, it does, I'd imagine you've been getting the same information from them that we just got. It does seem pretty, pretty, like I said, sobering, intense, expensive. And I, you just happen to be the developer that's standing in front of me coming out of that meeting right now, I recognize. But I walked away from that conversation just wondering like, why, you know, to what degree are we asking people who are developing, who are putting strains on sewage and other types of infrastructure? You know, to what degree do we as a city ask them to contribute to those costs, given how costly they are? Do they just walk away, you know, with their bag of money? Again, I recognize that's a radical simplification. I recognize that the city benefits from having additional tax base and all that good stuff. But you know, to what degree do you contribute to, you know, the cost of really building out quite expensive infrastructure as a developer?
Yeah, so the burden to cover some of those costs is deferred somewhat to the developers. But the reality is the city has to put some of that planning for how to cover those costs into their plan. Some of those things that we currently pay are impact fees at every lot. So not only do we provide all the infrastructure at no cost to the city, we'll build all the sewer lines, we'll build all the water lines, we'll pave all the roads and, you know, take the burden of the cost of that and provide that to the city at no cost. But on top of that, we'll pay an impact fee to the city for things like water and sewer connections, traffic and street improvements on a per lot basis.
With, and that's within the area that your property covers, but not necessarily for, you know, we were talking about kind of lift facilities and, you know, all those other kinds of things. And it looks like Bill's going to jump in and help me out here, but.
So those impact fees do go to fund the top items on the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
And that capital improvement plan gets updated every several years with new priorities.
Right.
But the impact fees do pay for citywide capital improvements.
Okay.
So they are in, they are paying impact fees for sewer, stormwater, roads.
And then as a city, do we, are we constantly adjusting those impact fees based on? Okay, and we just didn't have that conversation, there wasn't time to have that conversation tonight or in our pre-meeting.
It's currently being updated.
Okay, so we're constantly making those adjustments.
Can I comment on that or just kind of follow up on that question before you go to the next one? And I think there's a little bit of a philosophical issue there relative to the responsibility that growth has to pay for.
Right.
And you're talking about the off-site, the big, you know, maybe regional type facilities. And I'll certainly say this, it's very common for growth to pay for those things in their entirety or very close to it. Oftentimes that's through impact fees and other times. It's a matter of development, you know, maybe reaching some kind of critical mass before they can afford something like a lift station to serve a particular area. And I think that's, I'm sure that's something we're going to talk a lot about.
Yeah.
Relative to development and land use changes and that sort of a thing. But yeah, bringing that up, I think that's a.
Yeah, and again, as I said, you just happen to be the one standing in front of me as I'm thinking about all this stuff. And it does seem like we have to figure this out while you're figuring other stuff out. I mean, there's lots of moving parts, it seems. You were going to say.
Oh, there are a lot of moving parts and, you know, I've been, I've developed all across the Wasatch Front and we've fronted the cost for lift stations before in certain developments and then applied for impact fee credits that would offset that cost over time. So as a developer, we do try to work with the city to make sure that they get what they need out of the project. We don't, we don't always just want to take the money and run, so to speak. We need to work with the city to make sure that it's a cohesive development and works for all parties. Otherwise, I mean, it's just not sustainable and we don't want that, so.
Yeah, okay. One of the other things that I was going to ask you about was, at some point during your presentation, you showed at least a kind of section or sliver of Broadview Shores, which is a much larger development. And from what I remember about Broadview Shores, it's been a few years since that came through the planning commission and so forth. But one of the things I really liked about it was the real wide variety of lot sizes. And it was hard for me to kind of, just because you're kind of moving through things to, and I, so I just wanted to pause on that a little bit longer. So I said, one of the things that I found really appealing was, just given the sheer size of it, it was able to offer a really wide range of different kinds of lots. And would you mind going back to some of those numbers? I don't know if they have to be on the slides and just help me understand what 6,000 to 18,000 square feet is in terms of acreage? I mean, I know that in Broadview Shores, there's some really large lots. And then, and then kind of more high density, I don't know if anything in there was literally high density versus medium density maybe. But what sliver of that are you trying to capture? I'd imagine it's not the whole range that Broadview Shore offers, but what, what does 6,000, does 20,000, or as you're saying, 18,000 look like?
Yeah, we don't have the bandwidth, so to speak, to address it on a global level like Broadview Shores was able to because their project is just massive.
Right.
This current sliver is just what's currently developed and in front of the city and apparent for everybody to go out and tour and see. And so if you take a look at this subdivision, these lots right here are 6,000 square foot lots. That's an example there. A 6,000 square foot lot mathematically is, I can't, slipping my mind right now, but it's.
I tried pulling up like an acre to square feet converter, but it just wasn't working for me.
What's that?
15, 1500ths of an acre, give or take, if I don't put it that way.
Yeah, we could, we could do the math real quick, but 6,000 square foot. Yeah.
Is that it?
And then.
That's right.
So then 18,000 would be 3/7ths of an acre, so not quite a half an acre.
Yeah, so 6,000 square foot lot is .13 of an acre. And then, you know, your 10,000 square foot lot is .23 of an acre. And so if you look at Broadview Shores, you've got some 6,000 square foot lots clustered together here. You've got 8,000 square foot lots sprinkled with 7,000 square foot lots here. And then you move over into the eights and 10,000 square foot lots. And then along this church, they've got some big lots that are a little over a quarter, all the way up to thirds and almost a half acre for this lot here. Our, our concept, we hope, would do similar to this small section of Broadview Shores. We'd want to mix in some of the smaller lots over here at a minimum lot size of over 6,000 square feet. And then buffer along the existing subdivision with some bigger cul-de-sac lots and things that were larger. Our original concept plan had a lot in here, right here, that was 18,000 square feet. So between a third and a half acre lot. And there are a number of 12,000 square foot lots in these cul-de-sacs. So we would hope that that's where we land. But like I said, we're, we're kind of, after the neighborhood meeting, we really, it was apparent that we needed to do a lot more work on this.
Right, and that's, it was just a follow-up question, that is say that my sense, we just barely got the letter from Jonathan Hill. So I've just kind of been perusing it as I can. But my sense is that the neighborhood would want perhaps a wider variety, maybe even larger lot sizes than 18,000 or more of, more of the 18,000 kind and fewer of the 6,000 kind. I mean, and you or when we hear from public comment, maybe the neighborhood will come up and clarify that for us as well, but.
Yeah.
What's your sense? Are they pushing, are they pushing you to think beyond 18,000 or more of the 18,000s or?
The sense that I got from the neighborhood meeting was that they would like to see a subdivision that got lots as close to 10,000 square feet as they could. So the .23 acre lot was something that they said would be, they wouldn't have a strong objection to it. They do have a strong objection to the small lots that we were proposing. As we plan the subdivision and the street layouts, what we're focused on is trying to achieve somewhat close to that four units to the acre. That's what, that's what we expected when we put the property under contract. And so we'd like to try and get somewhere close to that four units to the acre, but not exceed it by any means. And where the concept evolves from there, we would like to provide a little bit of a diversity so that we can keep some lots and provide some homes that aren't super expensive. And then sprinkle in some areas that have some bigger lots that are sold at a premium with bigger homes on them.
Okay, I guess I'll just end by saying that my response to that would be that for me, what makes Broadview Acres really work, and again, I recognize that your project isn't as large in scope. The 6,000 acre lots work because there are, you know, so much, there are lots of larger lots around as well beyond, you know, just what's built currently, it sounds like. That the idea of being able to stay in the community and through the different phases of one's life as you're upgrading and then downsizing, you know, upsizing and downsizing again, make that work for me. And again, I don't know that you can accomplish the exact same thing as Broadview Acres would accomplish. But I like that idea a lot. And I recognize that no individual subdivision is kind of self-contained, right? People can move out of the subdivision but still live closely, so you're not responsible for everything. But my sense is that the concern with, on the west side is that with so many of the same size, with, you know, with the exception of Broadview Shores, so many of the exact same size lots being built leaves no room on a kind of bigger picture for that upsizing and downsizing. And it's mostly get in to start a home, leave the neighborhood and then rent out your, your kind of investment home to, you know, any number of people. And I don't want to throw shade at renters. I mean, that's not what I'm trying to do, but it does make it hard in terms of community functioning and when you have that happening on a massive scale. And so for me, that's the bigger picture in which you're operating. And thinking about that, I think would, again, I'm sure the neighborhood has said all this already, but that seems really important to me to think about that much larger context.
Yeah, we got that same feedback from not just the neighborhood, but also the planning staff. We want to, we'd love to create a neighborhood that has some lot diversity in it so that you can move through various stages of your life and stay in the area. That's, that's key for us. How we, how we implement that on the concept is the hard part, right?
Right, yeah, and again, for me, I don't know that just getting close to 10,000 is the right answer per se because that's still not the variety.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I think I'll stop there. I've gone on too long.
Thank you.
I just have one more question. On your pencil schematic, it looks like there's a flag lot?
Yeah.
Is that right? Do we permit flag lots?
Yes.
Okay, interesting. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, anything for the applicant? I think that discussion was very, very helpful and we'll open things up for public comment in just a moment. Let's see if that helps at all. But I think maybe it might be good just to talk through, and I'll just put it this way. My disposition, given that the applicant has requested that these items be continued tonight and given the fact that we have the recommendation that we do from staff and the concerns that have been raised by the neighborhood, I'm certainly inclined to only consider continuing these tonight, just speaking for myself. And I think that's something that might be helpful for members of the public that are here to think about. It sounds like everybody's going to get another bite at the apple. And perhaps relative to that, let's say just hypothetically that this is continued tonight. Then as I understand it, the applicant's next step likely would be to do some retooling. At that point in time, things would be scheduled for another neighborhood meeting, formal, you know, discussion with them in advance of having staff also review the updated submittal in preparation of coming back to another public hearing with the, with the planning commission. So I guess that's another thing that I'd mention. And in fact, need to ask just relative to the process, we would be continuing conceivably the public hearing as well so that, you know, people would have an opportunity with the recent metal in the future to comment.
Yeah, that's right. And we would suggest, staff would suggest that this not be continued to a date certain because it's still too open. Not only does a new plan need to be generated and shown to the neighbors, but then the staff needs to have time to review it, send it through our typical review process where all the departments chime in. So I would say if the planning commission does want to continue this, it would be to a date certain.
Okay. Thank you. That being said, anybody have anything to?
Again, I think just for the public's sake, I'm certainly, I think most of us would be in favor or inclined to continue. If there's anyone who would be inclined to do anything other than continue or deny, again, that might shape just the amount of public feedback we get. And it might be worth noting that Jonathan Hill has provided us with a really thorough, what strikes me as really thorough, given that I've just only browsed it, kind of capture or summary of what's happened in the most recent neighborhood meeting. And I think we can, when we have time after the meeting, read that more thoroughly and, but I'm really appreciative of that, having that here and.
Well, I think it's important. It's wonderful to have people that come that may want to comment tonight, you know, even in light of what we've talked about and I think the plan of action that we've kind of spelled out relative to how we'll likely move forward. But that being said, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. You know, perhaps just with the thought out there that, again, the plan that we're here to talk about tonight likely is not what I think the planning commission is going to act on. So if the neighborhood chair from the Fort Utah neighborhood is with us and wants to come forward, we'll, we'll start there and see where we go.
Hi, so I'm Jonathan Hill. I'm glad you guys got my report, copies of it. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things here really quick. I know, yes, we are planning on continuing it. Interestingly, when this happens and we continue things often, we don't get to talk about what our concerns were. And you guys had several questions on that, and so I wanted to address that. First of all, just for the public record, as was stated in your report, we had over 65 people at the meeting. This was despite the fact that we had to put it together in less than a week and a half. Most of the flyers went out the day before or two days before the meeting. And really I say that because that has been typical whenever a developer comes in our area. People on the west side are very invested in the future of our community and what it's going to look like because we feel like there's a lot of pressures to change what our community is like and lots of different ways that it can go, and we want to have a voice in that. We did take two opinion polls at the meeting. These are non-binding, of course. Essentially, they were on the first two items that were requested to be continued today. The first one was the removal of that appendix C3 from the general plan that the staff went over. I just want to emphasize the vote against that at the meeting with the 65 people was unanimously against. Three people abstained. I talked to one of them afterwards. They said they were just confused about what the C3 appendix was and they didn't feel like they could vote on it. We also asked about the 110 PD zone, if people would support that, and that was. We also asked about the one-ten PD zone, if people would support that, and that was also unanimously against it. And I think the, the key there, and the reason why I emphasize that is because there is not a lot of disagreement in our area. In fact, in personal conversations, emails, et cetera, I've only had one person that does not feel, um, the same about it as the, the people at the meeting. And so, uh, we're talking greater than ninety percent consensus, um, that this is not the way we want our community to go. And to help you understand where we do want it to go, I really, I, I have to tell my personal story. So I got a job at BYU, uh, looking at moving to the area, and my wife at first refused to look at anywhere in Provo. She did not, we were both BYU students, she did not want to be back with the students, right? Um, and so we looked at Spanish Fork, we looked at Lehigh, we looked at American Fork, we looked everywhere around Provo, right? And then finally, we saw this listing for the west side. And I said, honey, let's just check it out, it's right by the river, I could bike to work, it would be great. And, uh, she said fine, and we went out there, and we saw that there was this other side of Provo that's very different from the rest of Provo. And, uh, in fact, I remember the owners, they said, you know, there's usually cows next door, and sometimes they smell. And my wife lit up, and she says, that's great! And, uh, she, she had grown up on a farm, she loved this kind of out, outside, lower density, less traffic type of atmosphere. Now, um, that is a refrain we hear over and over again from neighbors, you know? We came to the west side to escape the hustle and bustle, um, of major Provo, if you will. Um, and so we're looking to preserve that. We know growth is coming, we're not going to say no growth, no, nothing can change out there, we know it's coming, but we want it to be smart growth that allows us to keep that quiet area. And so, as I've mentioned in our, our report, the concerns are about density, you were asking about that. I don't know exactly where the neighborhood would be completely happy, I actually think it's a scale. Um, definitely nothing less than six thousand, less than six thousand is more dense than anything we have as an R-one zone in Provo, right? And so, uh, that would be six to eight, still, I do not think would get a lot of support, um, honestly, if I'm being perfectly honest. When you get into the R-one-eight type zone, we probably start to get some support, we're going to have major divisions in the neighborhood. R-one-ten true ten thousand eight, um, square foot lots would probably see good support. Um, and as I was telling Brian on the phone yesterday, if they did half acre lots like the SPD zone says in here, we'd probably, you know, get donations and erect a statue to them. Um, so that's, that's kind of where things are looking, there is a scale, there is room to negotiate, it will depend on details. Um, traffic as well, um, we are very concerned because I did some calculations, there's two hundred, um, developable acres not in the airport protection zone with between three hundred north and three hundred south. So this is what I call the center street watershed kind of zone, this is where all the traffic's going to end up on center street. And if you run those numbers, even at four, we're going to overload that road and have to use eminent domain to widen it, and nobody wants that out in my neighborhood. Um, so we're working with the city to go through those traffic numbers and try to do it. But I think because of the infrastructure in this area, we're going to have to keep the density of these homes down even below four units per acre. Now, um, Jayman talked about, um, having a variety of density and things, and we agree, we should have that. We tend to think of it on a larger scale. Most people in my neighborhood would support higher density down on the southern portion of Lakeview Parkway. Because there you have a nice four-lane road, good highway access, good downtown access. Um, and I use that higher density to offset lower density up where everything's going to end up on center street and overland that road. So I won't take any more of your time, like you guys said, we will have another bite of the apple later. Um, but I just wanted that opportunity to kind of show you guys where we're coming from and kind of prepare you for what kind of things we're going to see in the future. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hill?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs that would like to speak to any of these items?
Beth Alagut, Southwest Area Representative, I'm actually going to talk a little bit more on an area scale. You guys had that presentation from Waste Water today, kind of shocking numbers. Um, they are one of three or four developers that are coming to the area, and we've had several developers that have been denied recently. And I think this is a good opportunity to take a step back, to see what we want to do in the area, push forward on the master plan. Have community development come up with some stuff, get the neighborhoods involved, and actually have a plan moving forward. So we can tell developers, this can work here, like Jonathan said, but we can offset density elsewhere. And we have a plan moving forward, we have design standards moving forward. Also have a plan for our infrastructure. So that if we only do have a limited amount of connections, maybe form a plan of you get to hand out this many connections a year until we have more connections going forward. I just think we're at a really good place right now to pause, think about this, and actually come up with some good plans going forward. Thank you, yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Um, I, I'm not sure exactly what shape this, uh, the, the kind of broader envisioning has taken that you're, that you're referencing. It'd be really great for us to know or be involved in that to some degree, you know, just to, to, because we, it just seems like, I mean, given how much you're here. Uh, it seems like we just hear mostly stuff, you know, proposals for the west side, and, and to not have, uh, a, 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 you know, just a knowledge of or even a role in kind of thinking through that seems, uh, counterproductive, uh, actually. And I, I, again, I don't know what that would take, and we can talk about this offline.
I was going to say, I'll come, I'll come.
But it would be, it'd be really useful to, uh, figure something out, just given the amount of stuff we get for the west side.
Meaning you want some presentations from the neighborhoods of what we expect, or, because?
Yeah, just what you're thinking.
I don't remember if you remember a couple of weeks ago, we presented a neighborhood kind of, a master plan.
I happened, I mean, I happened to be gone, um, for that particular meeting.
Go, go, go watch it on YouTube.
But, uh, but again, I, and again, I think even, even something more intense than occasional presentations might, might, might be worthwhile. But we can talk about that and, and.
We, we are looking through a master plan, planning process, we've had some, some starts and fits about what that process looks like. I mean, it's been, um, it, it's, the history of master plan in neighborhoods has gone back and forth between neighborhood-driven, community-development-driven. And so we're trying to find that balance and trying to move forward with something that can be good for everybody.
Yeah.
And, and I'm really thinking that we can get it done this time in a, in a way that we can balance things out and provide a good area and a good plan development, or a good plan for the future development.
Yeah, and I, I just think having the planning committee, someone or a couple of people from the planning commission involved in that process could be really, really productive.
Let me talk to you about that afterwards, because I have a, I have a interesting tidbit for that.
Sorry.
And then, actually, I'd like to maybe explore that a little bit further. Has it been customary at all in the past with some of the other neighborhood plans that have been done to have somebody from the planning commission be assigned or involved?
It has not. In this particular case, um, it would seem to, uh, have some merit in that we're talking about a quarter of the city. We're talking about the largest area of the city that's greenfield, that is not redevelopment, it's new development. And so, uh, it would seem to have some merit, I would think.
There is a little bit of issue about the planning commission code.
Yeah, are there any legal ramifications of such a thing?
Yeah. I, I, yeah, I would just be interested, I'd be really interested in having a, a further conversation about this.
Yeah, I can stay after.
Again, it's just hearing proposal after proposal and bumping up against the same issues over and over again.
Over and over.
And us being kind of in the dark about them, um, generally, I mean, again, I recognize you presented last, last meeting when I wasn't here, but that seems insufficient still.
We're, like I said, we're, we're working out some, some process issues, and we're hoping that we can get it worked out soon so we can get something going forward.
Well, and I guess then what I'm, as, in essence, just doing is echoing what Mr. Ronan's saying, which is that I think you've got an opportunity to tap into a pretty good resource.
I, we're trying, we're trying to get everybody on board.
Well, and, and as much as staff has any influence over what the process looks like, um, and relative to resources, to be clear. The best resource I think that you have is our staff. The community makes a tremendous investment in having them available to help with things like this. And I hope that, uh, certainly on something that's as detailed as what we looked at a few weeks ago, that, um, simply they're, they're put to work.
Like I said, that we're, we're working through that process right now and making sure that we can get both community development and the neighborhoods on the same, same page, same board, and moving forward with this.
Great.
I just, I just want to vouch for Beth and all the, the west side neighborhood chairs and citizens, they put a lot of work into a lot of this. And there was a phase where they were putting three commissioners on a planning committee. And then there's been a lot of committee shifts and, and different styles and definitions, and so I know they're eager to get going, uh, or to get solidified, I guess. Yeah, so.
Like I said, it's, there's a history of the plans coming from the neighborhoods and communities, so we're just trying to figure out the process.
Great.
Any other questions?
Sorry, that's not what we expected when you came up.
No, no, that's fine, it's, it's good discussion.
Okay, thank you.
You know, in light of Beth's comments, I guess, I thought about maybe bringing this up later, but I'll do it now. We did have an opportunity to hear, you know, some of the things relative to some of the infrastructure deficiencies that we have on a couple of different scales. We didn't quite get finished, I felt. So, uh, whether it's as part of the study session before our next meeting, or even, you know, as part of this meeting, having somebody from Public Works give us an opportunity to, to sort of hear the remaining part of, of, um, that presentation that was started. I've got a handful of questions that even perhaps, you know, we could relay through community development over to Public Works, uh, so that we could address. Um, I think clearly, clearly a lot of issues are going to be well outside the purview of the planning commission in terms of addressing some of those deficiencies, but also, um, they're going to be very germane to rezoning properties for development and, and a lot of things that will be underplayed as well.
So based on these recent discussions about infrastructure, the position of staff has been, and the position that the staff is telling the development community is that for the next approximately three months, the staff will not, um, be comfortable recommending approval on any general plan amendment or zone change in the west side uh, until the city council has bought off on some plan for addressing the infrastructure issues that you heard about today. I hope that we can use that three, those three months effectively to do some of the things Ms. Alagut talked about. Because it, it is giving us, um, window of opportunity to, to get some of that planning done.
Okay, would anybody else from the public like to, to comment on any of these items?
I'm just one of the little people, I'm not at anything.
We sure appreciate you being here.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Would you mind stating?
I'm Kristen Randall, and I'm a resident of this area. Um, first of all, I would like to ask your permission to write to you, because I, I have a lot to say and I really don't want to take up your time tonight. So could I email you guys with, with the thoughts that we have?
If you'd like to provide correspondence to the community development staff, then they'll make sure that we get it.
Okay.
So I think that's the easiest way to do that.
Okay, all right. Just a few points, I, I have to tell you that this is really tough for us. We are so emotionally involved with our community. And our children trying to cross center street, and, and a lot of the things that are going, there are women I know who are not sleeping late at night over all of this. We feel like, okay, if the west side was a person, a lovely young person, we feel like that person is being constantly pushed into a political marriage. It's, we just feel forced, we feel like, and it's, it's relentless, it's just people coming at us and at us who want to make money. But we live there, I've lived there forty years, and I'm a baby boomer, boomer, and I added on to my house, I didn't downsize. I bought the lot next door, I've got thirty thousand square feet, I will not give it up for anything. And many of us are hoping to have animal rights and places for homesteading and large gardens, and nobody's talking about that. But that's a very real thing. I've got a neighbor who goes and milks goats every day, and she has to go down to Center Street to Sherri Goodman's barn because she can't, can't do it in her own yard. So there are a lot of us who feel that way. Um, I just, what, this is what I would love. I would love for us all to just slow down and back off. This is the last green land you've got. I used to live in New York, we lived in Hartsdale, it was a wonderful place, huge trees, quarter of an acre, we had a forest. And it was kind of the place where people came back from work in New York City to become sane again. Honestly, New York is like the Woody Allen of the United States of America. Hartsdale was like the spa where everybody decompressed. And that's kind of what we have the opportunity to be. We little people really need to know what to expect. We need to know what to plan on, we need to know where things are going. And I think the only way to do that is to stop all these developers that just keep coming at us and coming at us, and just say, wait till we have this master plan done. So that we can say, this is our concept, this is the kind of place we want it to be. Connecticut, I don't know, it's beautiful. We want the time to do it right. And we can't do it right if we're being pushed in the, to the backseat of the car all the time. So if, if you guys would just, we're going to be here another hundred and fifty, three hundred years unless, you know, North Korea kills us all, but, um, we've got time to do this right.
Ma'am, I think your point's well taken, I really do, particularly if you wanted to provide any additional, you know, thoughts or comments.
Oh, honey, I don't have anything solid at all. I'll write to you about that.
Whatever you care.
But anyway, thank you, I just wanted to give you an idea of what, what this is doing actively in our lives every day. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Hi, my name's Erin Ott, my address is twenty-eight forty-one West five-thirty North. I bought my home twelve years ago, so I have a few kind of jumbled points, I'll talk fast. Um, in the neighborhood meeting, it was stated that the previous plan with a hundred and one lots, those homes would start at three hundred and ten thousand dollars. So I think, you know, debatable is, whether it's affordable is certainly debatable in the first place. Um, I've heard many times the argument that you live there, so why shouldn't anyone else be able to live there? If the subdivision formerly known as a field where I live hadn't been built on, I never would have known the difference. I would have bought somewhere else, I wouldn't have been any the wiser. So I think we should prioritize the concerns of existing homeowners over hypothetical ones. I'm sympathetic to the landowners' desire to sell their land, I agree they have a right to sell it. I don't agree they have a right to or expectation of a zone change. I think we should be very cautious about changing zoning, once it's gone, it's gone. I don't see a future time when developed land is rezoned and returned to open space or less dense housing. I think the west side planning committee made thoughtful and reasonable recommendations for the west side. I think we should give those recommendations weight. I think we're in danger of creating a situation where we lose the good things about the west side because we've been in a rush to use up the available space without regard to traffic, schools, loss of green space, water table issues, on and on. I'm not suggesting there should be no further development at all, but I think we should look at what the ideal is for the area and not what will make any specific entity the most amount of money today. My understanding is that the amount of buildable land left in Provo is a known quantity that isn't going to change. Let's be careful about using it up now, Provo has a long future ahead of it, let's not steal from it. I think we should consider that the Provo housing market doesn't exist in a vacuum. If you have a higher income and you would like a larger lot or a larger home, you leave Provo. You head to places like Lehigh, Saratoga Springs, Elk Ridge, Alpine, Highland. And yet we have areas like the River Bottoms that seem to succeed despite our modest median incomes. Um, I know I stopped in at the Broadview Shores sales trailer right when it went up, before they'd even built any homes. They showed me the map, all those larger lots were already marked off in red, they said these are all gone. So I think there's certainly a desire for those larger lots, and that the neighborhoods would certainly be happier to see some of those larger homes and larger lots in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address any of these issues, items? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then. Please come on up. Looks like you might be the last one.
I'm Tom Halliday, uh, live on, I live at thirty-four sixty West Center. Own much property down there. And, uh, I ran the property that the Hallidays own. I know that a lot of people want to see, uh, open spaces and, and, uh, I guess no growth, but, uh, the reality is somebody has to pay for that. And you can only pay for that so long until you get old and your children come along and. and they can't afford to do it, and they don't want to do it. And something has to happen. And I believe that these people that live around here only have a sight back as far as they came here to live, and they don't remember that every one of their homes used to be fields, because I lived here for 55 years, and I've seen it. And they got to realize that as property owners, we need to have the opportunities to move along and do the things we need to, need to do. Now, I don't, I don't prefer the small, what do they call it, multiple-family dwellings at all. I like to see situations where we have maybe some starter homes and, and then a lot of mid-family style homes, the 2,000-square-foot homes, 1,500-square-foot homes. But I know that my kids are moving into the 1,200-square-foot homes right now, because they're young and they can't afford those bigger ones. And we have to allow area for that to happen too. I like to see it where there's a multiple of smaller homes and, and medium-sized homes and larger homes. I think that puts a rich variety in the neighborhoods. It allows for stability and allows for people to grow and grow within the area. I hope that as things move along and we see the growth down there, that we can see that kind of development and, and development that helps mature the neighborhood and keep things, you know, within what the city structure is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Anybody? Anybody else? Okay, great. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then on those three items, and I'll look to my colleagues for any additional discussion we might want to have. Anybody make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue to an unspecified date, items two, three, and four.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I just ask a question of staff? What's the advantage of continuing versus just denying? I mean, it sounds like it's going to be some time before it comes back. If it, if it's denied, does it then have to go to the council, whereas a continuation wouldn't? Is that the only difference, or?
If, if you deny it, and then it goes on to the council and is denied, then the applicant has to pay fees all over again, file a new application to amend his plan and start the process all over again.
Okay.
I should mention, you probably do need a separate motion.
For each?
For each item.
Thank you.
Probably cleaner that way.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to be for item number two initially.
Mr. Lee the second? Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead and call for a, for a vote on that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounded like that was unanimous, so moving on then to item number three.
Make a motion to continue item number three.
And?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Again, unanimous. Item number four.
Anybody else want to turn?
You're on a roll.
Make a motion to continue item four.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Again, unanimous. Item number five, continued. Mr. Maxfield, does that mean that we need to, to take any action on our part, or was it noticed on the agenda such that?
Yes, we'd be, all be re-noted in the paper and, and sent out to the 500-foot radius we normally do.
Okay. Great. Item number six.
Okay, this, I've lost the.
Is the Public Works Department, or?
It is. And this is just some updating that's here. If you have questions, David Day from Public Works is here to answer those. But if you see from the text of this, you can see that it's merely just reference updating and doesn't, well, you may argue, you may want to ask him what the UDOT 2017 standard's on, since some of that's being added, but, you know, it's something that it's, the state, changes in the state code require more specific, yes, more detail, more specificity? Is it too late to say that? Say it for me, someone. Anyway, in the reference to, to documents, and so that's part of the reasons being updated.
Mr. Maxwell, thank you.
Again, I'm David Day with Provo City Public Works. And Brian's right. As part of the new state code, we have to adopt all of our standards, you know, specifically by name. We brought this to you like, I don't know, two months ago.
You had a lot of books.
Yeah. Or, yeah. I'm worn out from carrying those, so I didn't bring them tonight. But if you want to see them, we have them. So, so really what we're doing, if, if you look at the, the updates, we're changing our standard drawings to the 18s and our development guidelines to 18. We added the UDOT specs, because occasionally in the city on UDOT roads, we require developers to build it according to UDOT spec. We debated whether to add that or not, because if they want to work in UDOTs right away, they've got to do that anyway, but we thought, well, we might as well put it on there just so it's right there up front. And then the, the other item that was added is Utah has their own uniform, manual and uniform traffic control devices, which has like about 100 more pages of specific things just for Utah. It kind of piggybacks on the top of the federal book. So those were the additions, and then we just renumbered the items. We did talk about coming back with a, a more broad discussion of complete streets, the NACTO guidelines, and some of those other things. We haven't really had time to really go through that yet, but we still plan on going through that and bringing that back to you to, to make even more modifications to this later on. But right now, this is just to get ready for 2018, as we come up on the new calendar year.
Thank you. Anything else at all relative to?
That's all I had. If, and again, and we have copies of all of these documents, if you ever want to look at them, but.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Day, or?
Yeah, I think I just add emphasis to my, I mean, I'm glad to hear you say and recall that we'd asked or recommended or suggested that you consult and include stuff that's more attentive to contemporary ideas about complete streets and those kinds of things. And I, I just want to emphasize how important that is, at least to me as a member of the planning commission. So I'm glad to hear you say that you still kind of do it. I think that, that matters a lot, a great deal to me.
That, that's still one of those items we have that we need to roll through and bring back up to you.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, great. Item also is a public hearing, citywide issue. So anybody from the public at all care to comment? Questions? Okay. Don't see anybody, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other discussion we have? Mission? Okay, if not, certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend section 1503, oh, two, oh, three, to update the standards from 2017 to 2018 as presented.
I think we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Great. Motion to second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous again, thank you. Perhaps before we adjourn, I mentioned earlier that just the idea of, of kind of following up on the discussion that we started before tonight. I know that we just have one meeting planned for December. I don't know what that study session might look like now or plans for it. Any thoughts or concerns with trying to do that? Just by way of a request of, of our Public Works. Okay. Great.
Yeah, we'll, we'll slide on that.
Okay. Jayman, do you have a?
Can't tell if this would be best in an email or just to tag on right now. Sean Miller recently contacted me. He's been tasked by the city with thinking about kind of agricultural land, and he, he just delivered a, a letter that he and his committee have worked up, and I, I thought it might be really valuable to have him. And he's thinking specifically about the West Side. It might be valuable to have him come and present just what his committee is thinking about. It sounds like you're not at all familiar with.
I'm not, which.
Yeah.
That, that would be good. And for the planners to hear that too.
You know, but if we can just, as long as we're kind of being thorough, I think he had, his letter I thought was really interesting, and the kind of thinking they're doing is, I think, worth, worth us hearing. And I mentioned to him, it might be great for you to come and, and talk with us, and he expressed interest in, in doing that. So I'll, I'll email out the letter that he sent me, just for people to look at. He sent me a draft to just get my input, and, and I'll include more information about what exactly his com. Yeah, yeah, he's, he's smart and.
So, so on that last issue, if people are contacting you individually, please forward whatever that.
Okay.
Is to Alyssa, so that she can get it out to the entire planning commission. Which is fine for the planning commission to receive input from the public offline, but we'd like it to go through the planning secretary, so everybody on the planning commission can get that and have the benefit of it.
Yeah, the, the thing that, I'll forward this, it's called the Agricultural Commission.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's definitely unanimous. Thank you.